Good evening, this is Mayor Cyril Jefferson calling to order the November 4th regular meeting of the High Point City Council. Here with me at the diocese, every member of council save our mayor pro temp, Michael Holmes. We will have an agenda today with a few items and a number of proclamations that we're excited to get into. Before we do that, we're going to ask you all to join us for a moment of silence as well as the Pledge of Allegiance. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the citizens of which this stands, one nation, united in the principle of liberty, justice, and tolerance for all.
We have our agenda for this evening and prior to getting into it, I'll ask and entertain from council adoption of our agenda.
So move.
Second, motion to adopt has been made by council member Moore and seconded by council member Andrew. Any discussion on the motion to adopt? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any against? The ayes have it and we have our agenda. As noted, we've got a number of proclamations that I'm excited to be able to share and celebrate. This evening? And we've got some visitors with us, so whenever we get to have this kind of fun at a council meeting, you just never know what might happen. So y'all bear with us. First, I want to call up Aaron Stratford Owens, who's Chair of the Continuum of Care, and also Jennifer Lewis, who's here from Youth Focus. Will you all please join me here? How are you? It's good to see you. Do you both have remarks that you want to speak on briefly? Okay, you have some too? Okay, briefly. So, we're going to read the proclamation. This guy's going to get a really good candid shot of us and then you'll both have a chance to give some remarks. All right. So, we're actually doing a joint proclamation because this month is actually Awareness Month, not only for national homelessness, but also for national homeless youth as well. And both organizations do incredible work in our community and throughout the entire county to address that. Whereas National Homelessness Awareness Month, along with National Homeless Youth Awareness Month, is celebrated annually in November with the purpose of drawing attention to the needs of people experiencing homelessness and to expand awareness of the issue of youth homelessness. This month highlights the work needed to prevent homelessness among children and teens and brings public awareness to opportunities available for individuals, organizations, and the community to become involved in responding to homelessness. And whereas various circumstances change the dynamics in households that create hardships, which can lead to homelessness and difficulty for some in obtaining necessities, which has become more prevalent throughout the United States and the world. And whereas there are many contributing factors that exacerbate current homelessness issues, including the shortage of affordable housing for extremely low-income residents, unemployment, medical expenses, loss of parental support, and other hardships, however, no one should have to worry about whether they or their family members will have a roof over their head. And whereas everyone can play a role in helping homeless individuals and their families achieve success through neighborhood associations, faith-based and community organizations, businesses, nonprofits, as well as policymakers and private citizens. So, it is important that we consider those who are less fortunate and participate in anti-poverty initiatives and efforts that benefit the homelessness community. Now therefore, I, Cyril Jefferson, Mayor of the City of High Point, do hereby proclaim November as National Homelessness Awareness and National Homeless Youth Awareness Month and ask our citizens to recognize that many people do not have housing and encourage support of our housing and service providers that are dedicated to eradicating homelessness. Now, I realize as I was reading that I started seeing several faces and I said, man, I didn't realize all these folks were here for this. I am so sorry. Can we have Ryan Ross from Open Door Ministries, Brad Bowers from Western Ministries, Antoine Dalton from Salvation Army come up? Pastor Saunders?
Oh, with Community.
Oh, with Community. Will y'all come on up too? Orel, will you come on up? I know you're with the Open Door Ministry. Is anyone else from your organization here?
I don't know.
Anyone else from COC here? Nina Michelle, y'all gotta help me out. Is anyone else here who's fighting a good fight? Okay. If you're not a part of this crew yet, no worries, you can join too. You can do good work too. Hey, Brandon, how do you want us to do it? So here, whoever's in the middle, will you hold that? There you go.
One, two, three.
Awesome. Thank you. So, you two want to have comments? We'll hear some comments. Okay. You want to go ahead?
Yeah, sure. Thank y'all so much.
No, wait, wait, sorry. I had to. Sorry.
Hi. On behalf of all the providers who are doing the hard work to bring attention, awareness, and services to folks in our community who need the extra supports, I'm here representing Youth Focus and we specifically focus on the housing needs of youth in our community. And I'm just so appreciative for proclamations like these and other efforts that are being taken to bring awareness among community members of how great the need is. I know for myself personally, you don't see youth homelessness in the same way that you see adult homelessness. It hides under the surface and I was shocked when I learned how many youth in our community are facing homelessness. And as a mom of two teens, it's hard for me to wrap my brain around the fact that there are so many youth in our community who literally do not know where they're going to put their head at night. And we have seen firsthand just how dire the need is. They say nationally, one in 10 adolescents, one in 10, one in 30 adolescents will face homelessness, one in 10 young adults, which is a staggering number. And you think, well, that's got to be for places like New York or big cities. But here in Guilford County, Guilford County Schools last year counted more than 2,700 children in the Guilford County School Systems who do not have a stable place to live at night. And that is just staggering. So, we are so appreciative for anything to bring awareness to this issue. We're trying to do our part. It takes a huge village to really move the needle. We're only able to serve 350 so youth a year. There's so many more that need our services. So, thank you for joining in the cause. A couple of things that y'all can do to be a part of the fight. Help us continue to bring awareness to the Safe Place Program. If you've seen the Safe Place signs throughout our community, that is a front door to our services for any youth who's in any kind of a situation where they are not safe. We've had a young man who was sleeping in the bus parking lot at Eastern High School. We had a young lady who was pregnant, living in a tent in a homeless encampment. If any of those kids can connect through the Safe Place Program, we can get them the resources and the supports that they need. And also, we will be having a education event coming up, November, I believe it's the 12th. If you go to our Facebook page, don't quote me on the date, go to our Facebook page and scroll back, we have that event. It'll be listed several times. You do need to register to attend, but it'll be a wonderful opportunity to learn more about the issue here locally and what some of the opportunities are to kind of step forward and take action. So, thank y'all so much.
Thank you.
Oh, thank you. My name is Aaron Stratford Owens. I am the Chair of the Board of the Continuum of Care of Guilford County. And I want to thank the City of High Point for being a partner in the work that we do to fight homelessness in Guilford County, to truly bring one Guilford together, to help to care for the over 600 people who live without shelter in our county. And I also want to thank all of our service providers who are in this room and those who are not in this room in High Point and Greensboro and all over the county who do this incredible work every single day. I do want to bring to your attention, we're celebrating the month in this event with this proclamation, but there's also a National Hunger and Homelessness Week, November 18th to 22nd. Many events throughout the county that you can be a part of. Also, please keep in mind that our point in time count, lots of volunteer opportunities for the point in time count, January 29th of next year. Thank you very much.
Awesome. Aaron, thank you. I see you guys hanging out.
Oh, I'm just hanging out.
Oh, just hanging out, okay. All right, thank y'all. Thank y'all so much. Our next proclamation is in recognition of Veterans Day. And I didn't see anyone listed here along with the proclamation, but I do want to do something special. I want to invite all veterans who are here with us, if you don't mind. I know council member Andrew has served our country as well as Assistant Manager DeKane has served as well. Are there any other veterans? If so, will you please come on up, please? And join me here. There you go. I see Barry Kittley, Louis Thibodeau, and Michelle McNair, who's with our city staff. Thank y'all so much. There's not enough words and we'll read this proclamation and thank y'all. Whereas the residents of the City of High Point have great respect, admiration, and the utmost gratitude for all the men and women who have selflessly served our country and this community and the armed forces. And whereas the City of High Point seeks to honor these individuals who have paid the high price for freedom, a place in themselves, and harm's way for the good of all. And whereas studies indicate that up to 72% of service members experienced high levels of stress during transition from military to civilian life, active military service members transitioning from military service are at a high risk for suicide during their first year after military service. And whereas veterans continue to serve our community in the American Legion, veterans of foreign wars, religious groups, and civil service. And whereas the City of High Point appreciates the sacrifices of our United States military personnel and believes special recognition should be granted, therefore be it resolved that I, Cyril Jefferson, Mayor of the City of High Point, North Carolina, do hereby declare today, through Veterans Day, November 11th, next Monday, a time to salute and honor the service and sacrifice of our men and women in uniform transitioning from active service and that in observance of Operation Green Light, the City of High Point encourages its citizens in patriotic tradition to recognize the importance of honoring all those who have made immeasurable sacrifices to preserve freedom by displaying a green light in a window of their place of business or your place of residence. Can we please celebrate these folks? Here. Come on in. Here you go. Line up. Line up. Awesome. Thank y'all. Thank y'all. Thank y'all. But before I read the next proclamation, just want to make sure, we'll have a green light on City Hall for the next, it's shining right now. And it's not a Christmas light, I was told to tell y'all. It is not a Christmas light. We don't celebrate Christmas that early here. But Operation Green Light is in honor of Veterans Day and the awareness and celebration of our veterans. And so, if you are interested and want to be a part of that, we certainly encourage you to at your place of business or your residence. So, thank y'all so much for that. And thank you again for all those who have served. Barry, I'm gonna have you come right back up, actually, because this next proclamation, I'm gonna invite you and the entire team that's here with you. I see Lindsey Ayers, I'll see Michael Cubain, and another member of your team. So, in case you were in town this past weekend and you were trying to figure out where all the ruckus was coming from, it was not from High Point University. No, I'm kidding. It was actually a centennial celebration. Our university has been in existence 100 years now and that's a very special time to celebrate. You gotta celebrate the centennial because I don't know if anyone plans to be here for the bicentennial, quite frankly. And so, this is such a momentous occasion and we appreciate y'all and everything y'all have done, not only to help revitalize our community, but prepare minds of the future. And we think that's a very, very special thing. So, we've got a proclamation for you all. Now, I know Barry and several of y'all read, like sat through this when I read it in full on Saturday. And I like to think I have a pretty good voice, a pretty good, you know, swooning voice from time to time, but what I'm going to do is give you the highlights of this one because we need another council meeting to get through the whole thing about High Point University, if that's okay? All right. All right. Whereas we gather to celebrate the 100th anniversary of High Point University, a cornerstone of our community and a beacon of knowledge, innovation, and excellence. And whereas founded in the year 1924, High Point University has consistently upheld its mission to provide an extraordinary education as a God, family, country school, and the premier life skills university in an inspiring environment with caring people. And whereas these transformative educational experiences continue to foster critical thinking and leadership skills among its diverse student leadership body. Whereas High Point University has been at the forefront of research, community engagement, and cultural enrichment, enhancing the quality of life for all citizens of the City of High Point. And whereas we recognize the faculty, the staff, the administration of High Point University for their unwavering dedication to education and their pivotal role in shaping the minds of future leaders. Whereas we honor the significant economic impact and countless partnerships forged between High Point University and the city through United Way, our High Point Police Department Leadership Academy, the Chamber of Commerce, and other complimentary community events enriching our community through collaboration in arts, science, technology, athletics, and more than 1 million hours of public service. And whereas the President of High Point University, Dr. Nino Cubain, has transformed the university from 90 acres to 560 acres, from a small, unknown school into a nationally and internationally recognized institution through the investment of almost $3 billion. And whereas numerous leaders of authority in higher education have ranked High Point University as the number one best-run college in the nation. And whereas the President of High Point University, Dr. Nino Cubain, has played a pivotal fundraising and leadership role in the revitalization of our downtown through such efforts as securing naming rights for the stadium, lessing park, playground, Nito and Mariana Cubain Children's Museum, the purchase of a professional baseball team, The Rockers, operating costs, authoring the More Than Baseball philosophy to spur surrounding development. Now therefore, I, Cyril Jefferson, Mayor of the City of High Point, North Carolina, do hereby proclaim, November 4th, 2024, as High Point University Day. In the City of High Point, let's come together and celebrate this significant milestone and look forward to a future of continued excellence, innovation, and service. Can we please celebrate this awesome celebration? Thank you. Thank you. Awesome. Hey, thank y'all so much. You know, Barry, I'm wondering, you know, with it being the centennial celebration, we should do something special. Maybe we can get everyone in the city to get flags and umbrellas and put it outside their businesses for you guys, maybe? Because I don't, I was about to say, I don't know if you guys ever thought about that. Maybe that's a great way for people to show their love, just a little, little something special. Thank y'all.
Congratulations.
If you've signed up to speak, you will have three minutes to come to our podium. We'll ask that for the record, you state your name first and last. We'll also ask that you give us your address and you'll have three minutes to speak to council. And of course, we ask that you address council. When that timer goes off, it'll be time to transition. The first person who has signed up on our list is Mr. Ken Orms.
Good evening. My name is Ken Orms. I live at 3525 Sainsbury Lane. Since 2016, the Board of Directors of our small 63-home HOA community has been trying to get the City of High Point to fix a problem they acknowledge they created. The issue is the public sidewalk and trail easement located on our property. The city attorney says it's not, that it is a private trail, not a public trail. However, on May 7th, 2023, Senior Planner Herb Shannon wrote, quote, "This overall development had a zoning condition for an integrated pedestrian trail system between the various portions of the development," and that their portion of this trail system is the key section everyone uses to access the city greenway trail, unquote. The city admits the sidewalk and trail are for public use and is therefore not a private trail and it must be maintained by the city. In the last eight years, we have been forced to pay almost $5,000 to maintain this public trail. We want the city to reimburse us for maintaining your public path and want the city to build and maintain a code-compliant trail. I submitted several public records requests and reviewed hundreds of city internal and external communications that prove the city mandated a public sidewalk and trail on our property as part of the zoning conditions as confirmed by Mr. Shannon. Deputy City Manager Ferguson admits that trails were supposed to be all-weather and appears some are and some are not. He admits the city failed to require other developers in the same area to comply with their zoning conditions. He admits the city failed to create a master plan or a funding mechanism to maintain the public sidewalk and trail used by those 700 homes. Documents prove the city required one developer to use substandard material on the public path that the city's own erosion control specialist said would not work. This creates a liability issue for the city when someone is injured on the public trail. Documents prove that the city staffers discussed threatening a zoning violation investigation if we persisted in our efforts to get the city to fix the problem they created. Our board contacted Councilman Ewing in 2018 and sent emails to our current Councilman Holmes. Neither responded or even acknowledged multiple emails or showed any interest in this issue. When asked why the city was not responsible, the city attorney refused to answer, saying "State law does not require the city to tell anyone why" and will not respond to any more questions. This entire situation stinks to high heaven and reminds me of why my wife and I moved from Chicago. We were tired of high taxes, crime, backroom deals by crooked politicians and governments that didn't care while screwing taxpayers. High Point failed every taxpayer by failing to do their job. It's time for the city to fix their admitted mistakes.
Thank you, Mr. Orms. The next person on our list to speak, first name's Chris, the last name starts with a T?
Tomasic.
Okay. Mr. Tomasic, pleasure to meet you.
George, Chris, I go by Chris Tomasic. I live on 1202 Lancaster Place in Emery Wood Forest. I had it written out, I'm looking at the time, want to make sure I get it across. I reached out to a couple of council members. Mr. Moore, I appreciate you giving back to me, sir. As a person in education, in 32 and a half years I've retired as a principal of a school and a director of a school, it, this here, this transportation, sometimes when you get these forms, it's more of a penance than it is progression. And I'm here speaking because I had, I've run into some neighbors of mine that are not happy that we lack speed limit signs in our neighborhood. We don't have enough speed bumps and we become a thoroughfare due to some construction on Kingston Road that Louis lives on. I met Louis today, one of my other neighbors, and people come flying through there. So, I'm speaking on behalf of the people in Yorkshire where I do, mainly for walking, about 12 driveways. It's not a very long stretch, but the void of speed bumps on Kingston, Kinister, I'm sorry about my tongue type, they come down Yorkshire. And there's no speed limit, so you can yell "slow down" all you want, but in reality, you're not, what's your background? How do you stop them from doing that? So, I had an opportunity to talk to a few parents with multiple kids in that area and there's people come flying through there. I don't want to be, I don't want to be civil because I, my neighbor threw his garbage can out in the middle of the road to cause people to slow down. I went to get it and he, "Sir, sorry, thank you, thank you, but I have it there to, I'm tired of these people speeding down." And so, in my head, from my years in education, especially as a principal of a school, when people get frustrated and they do bad things because they don't feel like they have a chance, some people have to say, "Let's catch our breath and let's start this process of fixing it," trying to. Well, I know I'm in Ward 3, so I'll reach out to that council person again. Mr. Britt, I'd like to have a conversation with you, maybe how we don't have to put a speed bump in there, but maybe some speed signs or a sign that says, here, like in Durham where I came from, in neighborhoods, they had a little sign and you went, drove by it, told you, "Hey, you're, there's a speed limit." Something to begin to train folks because they're avoiding that intersection of Lexington and Westchester. I've walked over there near Robin Hood where they cut through or Heathcliff, they come flying down because they're trying to get to work, get the kids to school, whatever, but they come through and it's a dangerous atmosphere sometimes, especially in the evenings when they're coming down Yorkshire, flying down to get on Heathcliff to make that left on Lexington. So, I'm asking more about some guidance. I'm asking to meet with someone who would be able to help maybe expedite the process or streamline it so we can get, begin to make it a little bit safer in that neighborhood.
Mr. Tomasic, thank you. A member of staff will contact you. Thank you so much. Next person on our list is Karina Cottle. Karina, if you'll come forward and state your name and address for the record, you have three minutes.
Hi, I'm Karina Cottle. I live at 2215 Plainview Drive. I just wanted to bring your attention to the lack of a cat leash law that the City of High Point has. Those of you familiar with the dog leash law know that it's extreme. I mean, there's a lot of points to it. However, there is nothing in regards to cats. The reason I'm bringing this about is a month ago, I was attacked by my cat that I have had for six and a half years. He's never shown any signs of aggression, nothing of that sort. However, one of our neighbors has a cat who likes to frequent our property. My cat is strictly indoors, so they never meet face-to-face. However, they like to try to fight each other through the glass French doors in our kitchen. So, I was sitting at work in my office and hear my cat scream on this particular day. I go out and I look and the other cat is on the other side of the glass doors, they're trying to fight through the doors. I try to calm him down, I barely touch him, and in about three seconds, he completely rips my hands and my arms really badly. The thing with cats and cat bites is that cats have toxins in their saliva. So, due to that, I had to go to the doctor, get antibiotics. The Guilford County Animal Control, there it is, doesn't do home visits following animal bites. They do follow-up, as they should, but they don't do home visits. So, I then had to take my cat to our vet to have a pre-screening for rabies, then had to take him 10 days later after his 10-day-at-home quarantine for a post-screening for rabies. All of this had to be done just because another cat, neighbor's cat, was on our property. I don't have a foot to stand on when it comes to going to my neighbors and saying something and requesting that they do not keep, or try to prevent their cat from coming on our property. The cat keeps coming. I've chased it around in the middle of the night with a flashlight and a spray bottle. I'm losing sleep, my cat's not happy, and it's just not fair to us that we're in these conditions due to the fact that there's no leash law for cats. Guilford County Animal Control will not pick up the cat because they had
And I had another neighbor just this couple days ago that lives down from me saying, "Louis, when are we getting this back?" And it's in the works, I know that. They're gonna put the speed bump back that was on Kensington Drive while we're doing the work. But it is a problem, and I know the city can help them out, whether it's speed limit signs or putting an officer out there to slow them down and get the message, this, because there's a lot of kids, parents, dogs. We're a Norman Rockwell neighborhood where a lot of people are just out, and I'd hate to see somebody get hurt. So I apologize for those that said, "I'm not planning to speak," I wasn't, but I just felt to say something about it, so, but thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Thibodeau. Is there anyone else who would like to speak during public comment period? Yes, ma'am, come forward, state your name and address for the record, and you have three minutes to address council.
Hi, Michelle Shahidian, 2427 Addison Boulevard. Thank everyone for their comments tonight, as well as all of you for your service. We have an election tomorrow, so just praying for a peaceful election, and with that, I'd like to offer a prayer for America from the Baha'i writings. O thou kind Lord, this gathering is turning to thee, these hearts are radiant with thy love, these minds and spirits are exhilarated by the message of thy glad tidings. O God, let this American democracy become glorious in spiritual degrees, even as it has aspired to material degrees, and render this just government victorious. Confirm this revered nation to upraise the standard of the oneness of humanity, to problem-gate the most great peace, to become thereby most glorious and praiseworthy among all the nations of the world. O God, this American nation is worthy of thy favors and is deserving of thy mercy. Make it precious and near to thee through thy bounty and bestowal. Abidul Baha. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak during public comment period? Seeing none, I'll go ahead and close our public comment period and say thank you to everyone who did take time to come and speak to council. First item we have is our consent agenda. Are there any items under consent agenda that need to be pulled? If not, then I'll entertain a motion of approval of our consent agenda.
A motion to approve.
I'll second. Motion's been made by Councilmember Moore and seconded by Councilmember Andrew. Any discussion on the motion to approve our consent agenda? Hearing none, all those in favor please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any against? The ayes have it, and our consent agenda is approved. Under our general business agenda, we have item 2024-425, consideration of reappointment to the City of High Point Human Relations Commission. Council's requested to confirm the reappointment of Dr. Talisha Roberts, Sheriff McGregor, and Roylyn Rod Smith to the Human Relations Commission, terms effective immediately and expiring November 1st, 2026. Is there a motion for this item?
So moved.
Seconded.
Motion's been made by Councilmember Moore and seconded by Councilmember Johnson. Any discussion on the motion to approve these reappointments? Hearing none, all those in favor please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any against? The ayes have it, and those reappointments have been approved. Before we adjourn, are there any announcements or comments from council?
I just wanted to report, this is Councilwoman Cook, that I did attend two Diwali celebrations this weekend, and they were both beautiful, amazing celebrations, and we were presented with a letter to the mayor requesting a resolution for Diwali for next year, and that has been presented to the mayor since that time, and we're hoping next year that we will be able to celebrate and recognize the people who recognize that holiday in our community. So I just wanted to thank all of those who welcomed me and wish you a happy late Diwali.
Thank you so much, Councilmember Cook. Any other comments or announcements?
Mayor, the community development and housing folks are having a meeting about housing for people to share their concerns on Wednesday, 6:00 p.m. to 7:30 at High Point Library, so if you guys can come out.
Thank you so much, Councilmember Harmon. Any other comments or discussion from the DIAS?
I'll give a PSA, this is Councilman Moore, the continuation of recovery in our western part of our state will continue for a long, long time. An advertised event downtown around our Stock and Grain area with multiple local businesses will be having what they're calling Rock the Block, which is multiple hours on Saturday. Unfortunately, I'll be out of town, but would certainly be there if I could, and hope to encourage others to come by if you can.
Thank you so much, Councilmember Moore. Any other comments or announcements from the DIAS? I will make just a few quick remarks. We honored Veterans Day today in Operation Green Light. On next Monday, Veterans Day will be celebrated. If I'm not mistaken, are they doing the parade this year? They are on Main Street?
Yes, sir.
It's on Sunday, so not on Monday, on Sunday. So on Sunday, there will be a parade for Veterans Day. Feel free to come out and celebrate, show support if you're able to. I think there's also a memorial on Monday that they do right at the place right in downtown near the train station. I think that takes place on Veterans Day, and then I know there's the breakfast at HPU on Friday. Again, thank you to all of our veterans. I want to know, I know we've got another council meeting before then, but just want to mention that we do have a holiday parade at the end of this month on the 4th Sunday, so November 24th, at 3:00 p.m., the High Point Holiday Parade. So come on out and see us. I'll be walking in the parade, so you can see me get my 10,000 steps in if you want. And then finally, I'll note, there was a comment made during public comment about our election tomorrow, and as someone who loves the fact that I live in America where it's government for the people, by the people, I am a real champion for democracy, and that means regardless of where you stand on the political spectrum, we want to ensure that your voice is heard, and want to ensure that you show up to vote. If I'm not mistaken, our city operations are offering transit, someone, someone help me out here.
Fair free on Election Day. Take public transit to the polls.
If you want to take public transit to the polls, fare is free on Election Day tomorrow.
And that people should go to their polling location, not to the early voting sites.
Thank you.
They can find that at vote411.com, which is a nonpartisan website for information.
Vote411.com, nonpartisan website to know about where your polling place is. Early elections had different polling locations, so make sure you go to your precinct. But again, our public transportation will be offering free rides to the polls, so tell folks, so that way we make sure people make their voices heard. And probably the most important note to me about Election Day is that America, being the folks to have kicked off this entire experiment of democracy, continues to stand, in my opinion, as a shining light around the entire world. I don't mind saying, call it an opinion, I also call it fact that we are the greatest country on the planet, and part of being the greatest country is the responsibility of how we show up to make democracy happen. So it's not just participating in our democracy, but it's also how we do it in a very peaceful way, in a very healthy way, too. And so my encouragement from this DIAS as a point of privilege is to encourage every single person, and also the people who you know, that we do our best to maintain what it is to have a very peaceful society, regardless of who wins, because if someone else would be president, and someone else would be governor, and so many other things, we want to keep it peaceful. I know here in High Point, we love our city, and we don't want to see anything crazy happen in our city. And I say that smiling, but I also say that with real seriousness. We want to make sure everything is very peaceful. I see Chief in the back, back there, I know their folks would be on high alert to make sure that we keep everyone safe. So, spread the word, let's have a good Election Day, and hug and love on somebody. With that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Second.
I move.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. I gotta give it to Councilmember Peters, she fought for that, I gotta give it to her. Motion to adjourn is made by Councilmember Peters, seconded by Councilmember McKeever. Any discussion on the motion to adjourn? Hearing none, all those in favor please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any against? The ayes have it, and we are adjourned.